Good evening. Let's call the business meeting of the Florence City Council to order. We could stand, please.
We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here. Empowers us to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Present.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Ms. Kemper? Ms. Wingo? Mr. Osborne?
Here.
We have a quorum.
First item is minutes of the special meeting of the March 5th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So I'll move.
Mr. Carroll? Second, Mr. Winn, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'd like to call to the podium Cadet Nathan Wells. Cadet Nathan Wells, class of 2025, is a Simon Kenton High School graduate. He's a member of the Cadet Public Relations Corps at West Point. Cadet Wells has been granted extended spring break leave so he can extol the virtues of the United States Military Academy at West Point to high school students, parents, and local leaders. He is in his third year at West Point with these distinguishing aspects: Defense and Strategic Studies major, Club Hockey, Sandhurst, which is an international military competition, Company C4, Environmental Engineering Track, and he studied German as his language. He plans to branch inventory following in his grandfather's footsteps. Cadet Wells is accompanied by Dan Tiberkey, a West Point Field Force representative for the 4th Congressional District. Dan's family also includes a son, Louis, and his daughter-in-law, Jess, who are both 2014 graduates of West Point. Dan's role is to encourage and assist students to achieve an appointment to West Point in the Hudson Valley of New York. I believe that Mr. Tiberkey is here with Cadet Wells to provide a brief picture of cadet life at West Point and answer any questions that you may have. So welcome Cadet Wells. And you can approach the podium and make sure that the mic is on. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As Mayor said, I was granted extra leave time to be here. Working with Mr. Tiberkey in the Public Relations Committee. So came home, just like to reach out to not only the city of Florence, but all of Northern Kentucky. Graduate of Simon Kenton High School, class of 2021, excuse me. Live over in Independence, Kentucky. I've lived there my whole childhood, moved up to New York. Took sort of the path that my grandfather always wanted to take. He ended up enlisting in the Army. He was a Green Beret in Vietnam. He's a combat veteran, and I really wanted to follow in his footsteps. In my third year, developing my own leadership style as well as leading others. Just wanted to show up and show my presence in my local towns. So if you have any questions or you're just curious about what cadet life looks like at West Point, I'll be feel free to come approach me after with any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, and we thank you for being here and thank you for your service. And thank Mr. Tiberkey as well. Next, we have first reading of ordinance 06-2024, An Ordinance of the City of Florence, Kentucky Changing the Name of Holiday Drive to Betsy Conrad Way. This ordinance changes the name of the public way presently known as Holiday Drive to Betsy Conrad Way. The full text of ordinance 06-2024, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the City Clerk of the City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard, Florence, Kentucky during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Winn?
It's my pleasure to second the motion.
Do we have any discussion?
I'll discuss a little bit. Betsy, for those who might not have known her, has been an institution in Boone County for her entire adult life. She passed away a couple of years ago, and a big loss for her family and for all of us in Boone County in Florence. She had various responsibilities throughout her life in the government realm, working both for Boone County and the city of Florence. She was a city clerk here, even served on the council at one point in time. And she's the epitome of someone that we would like to emulate as a good person, a good family member, and a good member of the community. So her husband is here today, and we appreciate Steve coming, but we appreciate Betsy also. Thank you.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mel. That was nice. I go back a long time with Betsy and her husband, Steve, and her daughter. The daughter works at the airport. She's been there. It's a good family, and Betsy was everything she was in their home, as well as at her job up here, being a city clerk. She took it very, very serious. When she was working up here, she was also going to college, I think over at Northern. She'll be missed. She has been missed, and she was a fine lady. And I'm glad that's a street being named after. I'm glad that her family is here. Thank you.
If I could, I would just like to read the full text of the ordinance. We don't typically do that, but in Betsy's honor, I would like to do that. It says, "An ordinance of the City of Florence, Kentucky changing the name of Holiday Drive to Betsy Conrad Way." Whereas Betsy Conrad's legacy is underscored by her 22 years of dedicated service as a Florence City Clerk, Human Resources Director, as well as her role as a two-term member of Florence City Council 2005 to 2008, and whereas Betsy Conrad was instrumental in creating the Northern Kentucky Municipal Clerks Association and was named Clerk of the Year twice. And whereas Betsy Conrad's impactful volunteer efforts, including her leadership as President of the Florence Women's Club and the Boone County Historical Society, have left a positive mark on various organizations within Florence and Boone County. And whereas Betsy Conrad's recognition as Florence Rotary Citizen of the Year in 2004, coupled with her Kentucky Colonel membership, further exemplifies her commitment to the city. And whereas the mayor and members of city council deem it appropriate to honor her memory and pay tribute to her remarkable contributions by naming a street in her honor, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Florence, Kentucky as follows: Section 1, that the public way presently known as Holiday Drive, more particularly described on Exhibit A and attached here too, shown on Exhibit B attached here too, is hereby renamed Betsy Conrad Way and will forever be known by that title. That the appropriate officials of the city are hereby authorized and directed to take such actions as necessary to accomplish this renaming herein authorized, and the ordinance shall be published by posting on the city's internet website. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Most definitely, yes.
Mayor motion passes 4-0.
And I do want to note, former Mayor Whalen is here, and Betsy worked under you for many years, and I know you can attest to her dedication to the city. Thank you for coming tonight. Next is ordinance 07-2024, An Ordinance of the City of Florence, Kentucky Changing the Name of a Section of Cardinal Drive and Commerce Place to Tom Gill Way. This ordinance changes the name of a portion of the public way known as Cardinal Drive and Commerce Place to Tom Gill Way. The full text of ordinance 07-2024, including its exhibits, is available for examination in the office of the City Clerk, City of Florence, Kentucky, 8100 Ewing Boulevard during regular office hours. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Winn?
Second.
Mr. Osborne, any discussion? I would note that this was a request from Mr. Gill's attorney regarding the road entrance to his establishment due to the changes in Kentucky 18, which blocked some access to the drive that you could normally use to drive into his property. Mr. Gill is also a very exemplary businessperson in this community, and he has donated over $100,000 to the Family Nurturing Center over the years. So we are pleased to give this recognition. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mayor motion passes 4-0.
Next is discussion and possible action to resolution of the City of Florence, Kentucky, adopting the Northern Kentucky 2024 Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And I believe Chief Black is going to talk about this?
We support the plan.
Okay. Okay. This is, the Northern Kentucky Area Development District did work with us, and I know we went to several workshops, some of the city personnel, and as well as other cities in the area in Boone County, and they did put together this regional hazard mitigation workshop, identifying hazards that might occur frequently, such as tornadoes or flooding. What would our response be in those kinds of actions? And so we are in support of this resolution, and so therefore we need to take official action. So this is Resolution R1-2024. It's a resolution of the City of Florence, Kentucky, adopting the Northern Kentucky 2024 Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there a motion to approve? Anyone? Mr. Winn, is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Osborne, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mayor motion passes 4-0.
Next item is Resolution R2-2024. It is a resolution of the City of Florence, Kentucky, and it's amending its non-exclusive franchise to Kentucky Back Hall Transmission Networks LLC, thereby amending Resolution Number R717. This is strictly a housekeeping matter to change the name of which this franchise was granted. They were bought out and their name changed. So is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Winn, second. Mr. Carroll, is there any discussion?
We might want to explain to our audience tonight just what this franchise is so they'll understand what we're doing.
Mr. Hunt?
So franchise agreements are put in place to allow utility companies to operate within the right-of-way. As a part of the franchise agreement, there is typically a $50,000 bond that's put in place. That way, if they're not getting permits, there's damage that we need to address, we can go after their bond. But franchise agreements allow utility companies to operate within our right-of-ways.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Winn?
Yes.
Mr. Osborne?
Yes.
Mayor motion passes 4-0.
Next is the mayor's report. I just wanted to thank our city staff who helped work tirelessly to get this Easter egg hunt on Saturday together. It was well attended. Everybody had a good time, and 10,000 eggs were hunted. So thank you to the police department. They always put on a great event. Our city offices will be closed this Friday, March 29th. And the Florence Aquatic Center memberships will go on sale. It will be one month of the sale, so it's the month of April. It's from April 1st through the 30th. Memberships will be sold online through the city's website. For more information, you can contact 859-371-5491. The Family Nurturing Center Blue Ribbon Ceremony will be held on Friday, April 5th, at Tom Gill Chevrolet. The event will be from 11:30 to 1:00, and the event is a kickoff to Child Abuse Prevention Month in April. In conjunction, and so we also do, in conjunction with that, we do an art contest. The City of Florence does sponsor that, and we'll be recognizing the winner. And the winner will have their artwork on display on a tank bus throughout the city. In conjunction with the Hoxworth Blood Center, the city is hosting a second blood drive on April 11th. The donor bus will be in the south parking lot of the Florence Government Center for appointments from 11:00 to 1:30 p.m. and 3:00 to 5:00. You can register online at Hoxworth on the city website or contact Hoxworth at 513-451-0910. All donors will receive a red hoodie. Spring cleanup is scheduled for April 22nd through 28th. So as a Florence resident, you may bring your unwanted trash and debris, excluding hazardous waste, to the public services facility located at 7850 Tanner's Lane for disposal. You must show proof of residency. Call our Public Services Department at 859-647-5416 for additional information. And the Great American Cleanup Event will be back this year. It's held Saturday, April 27th, from 8:30 to 12:30. It's a great opportunity to volunteer, help pick up litter along the streets and sidewalks of Florence. Volunteers who register will receive cleaning supplies and then be transported to various locations throughout the city. Free lunch will be served to the volunteers, and you can contact Victoria Riley at 859-647-5425 for more information or to sign up. Is there anyone on council who desires recognition? Anyone? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience? You come to the podium and state your name, please.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Betsy Rossi, and I'm the president of the Northern Kentucky Beekeepers Association. The Northern Kentucky Beekeepers are dedicated to promoting healthy and safe beekeeping practices in our community. We come together every month for education, support, and community outreach. There are several members of our group that mentor new beekeepers who would like to get started. Part of that mentorship process includes selecting the best location for beehives. Many single-family residential zone properties are appropriate for keeping honeybees. We're here tonight to open a conversation with council about the current zoning regulations that forbid beekeeping for single-family residential zone properties within the city limits of Florence. This issue came to our attention last year when one of our members, who was a Florence resident, set up their equipment in their yard to begin beekeeping, and within days of receiving the honeybees that were to go in those colonies, they received a letter from the City of Florence stating that they were to remove the equipment because beekeeping is forbidden within the city limits. We believe that the citizens of Florence should have the freedom to use their property as they wish. We understand there are several misconceptions about honeybees and beekeeping, so we'd like to request that this topic be added to the agenda for a future meeting so that we can provide more information and clear up those misconceptions. Other cities nearby Florence have taken different approaches when presented with their citizens wishing to keep honeybees on their property, so we think that we can come up with a win-win solution.
All right, thank you. If you could see our city clerk after the meeting and give her your name and number?
Okay. Thank you.
For the dialogue. Thank you. Anyone else? If not? Oh, yes. Please come to the podium. State your name. That's fine. And your address, please.
Okay, my name's Alex Evans. I'm the owner of Grateful Skate Shop, 8063 Production Drive, Florence, Kentucky. And I'm speaking on behalf of our skate park and the need for lighting and extended hours in the evening time. I would just like to start off by saying how incredibly thankful and blessed we are to have such an amazing park in our city. It's one of the most used parks in Florence and Boone County with a strong community at the heart of it, and I know many people who travel from all over the tri-state area to visit it. However, with the current hours being limited, dawn to dusk, this leaves many without a place to go when the sun goes down, especially during winter hours when it gets, or when it gets dark early and in the summer when the kids want to be out later. This does not serve the community, many of whom are in school or work typically in 95s and don't get a chance to use any of the parks in the hours provided. Keeping the lights on would not only benefit parkgoers, but the businesses in that area that would more than likely see an increase in traffic from people coming to visit our park. Another thing I'll add is that by keeping the lights off, this only pushes the people, the skaters who actually use the park, out and brings the troublemakers who, you know, give us all a bad rap in. Skate park nearby with lights is Lawrenceburg, Indiana, and I've talked to the community center director. His name is Mr. Richardson, and he said he's seen an increase in kids at the park skating and less out in the streets at night running around. We have one of the best parks in the greater Cincinnati area, and with just a few simple changes, it could be undeniably the best, drawing people from all over the area, increasing traffic to Florence businesses, and giving our youth and community a safe space in the evening hours. So I know I speak for more than myself when I say we've been asking for these lights for a while, and I hope you can take my ideas and others into consideration. Together, we can create a park, a space that's used by many generations to come. So thank you. And this does not only apply to just the park or this skate park. This could be basketball courts, baseball fields, any type of, you know, recreational area that people use in the evening hours, so. And I also have this thick stack of 1,000 signatures supporting the lights, so if you guys would like to take that or pass it around or whatever. It's all organized. It's by zip code, so made it real easy.
Eric, can you get out and grab that? And then if, I think that Eric, you have his contact information possibly?
He does, for sure.
I appreciate you coming, and thank you for being here tonight.
Appreciate it.
All right, is there anyone else? If not, oh, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Larkin. I'm actually a Cincinnati resident, which I'll explain why I'm here later. Do you still need my address? This is Cincinnati.
No.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Larkin, and I'm the founder of Cincinnati Skate Collective. CSC is an organization that provides community education, support, and resources to quad and blade skaters in Cincinnati and its surrounding areas, including Florence. Currently, there's about 1,300 skaters in our area, and that doesn't even include skateboarders, BMX, and scooter riders. The skate community is large and growing by the day. You may be wondering why someone from Cincinnati is coming to speak at a city council meeting in Florence, Kentucky. Cincinnati Skate Collective hosts monthly clinics and meetups that are all free, open to all ages and all skill levels, and we typically utilize Florence Skate Park as Cincinnati doesn't have a proper skate park of its own. Flopa, as local skate park users call it, is a fantastic park for a variety of skill levels with all of its different features. In 2023, we hosted nine free clinics at Florence Skate Park in addition to countless meetups, averaging about three a month as well. Skating brings people together of all ages, races, and backgrounds. It's a positive influence to an individual's mental health, physical health, and more. It's also one of the most accessible sports and activities for kids, cheaper than basketball, baseball, football. It's also the fourth-most-used recreational space in terms of weekly usage hours. The city could really maximize the usage of this park by turning on the lights in the skate park. After a long, hard day at school or work, skaters want to come to Flopa. Think about other kids that get to go to outdoor soccer fields or basketball courts for their evening practices in lit spaces. With the sun setting so early, especially in the warmer months, it makes it difficult for people to get a session in. By turning on the lights, you would also encourage skaters to utilize the space instead of utilizing street spaces or spaces where it's not wanted. There are many parks in other areas of the country that utilize lights so they can extend their hours of park usage with little to no issue. The great thing about this skate park is the hard part is done. You already have the lights, so now we just need to turn them on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Hunt? Whereas on May 1st, 2024, Chief of Police Tom Grau will retire from the City of Florence Police Department, marking 29 years of dedicated public service to the city of Florence and the community. And whereas Chief Grau, having graduated from the University of Cincinnati with a criminal justice degree in 1995, commenced his tenure with the City of Florence Police Department on May 1st of that same year. He holds the distinction of being the final officer hired by Mayor Evelyn Cobb and Chief of Police Charlie Callen, and is a proud member of the Kentucky Department of Criminal Justice, Academy Class Number 240. And whereas Chief Grau has demonstrated exceptional leadership, continuously progressing through the ranks, holding every rank within the department, including Corporal, Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, and Chief of Police. And whereas throughout his career, Chief Grau has served in every unit within the department, including but not limited to Patrol, Detectives, Community Resource, Crime Suppression Unit, Drug Unit, and has served as an Accident Reconstructionist, Hostage Negotiator, Field Training Officer, and Public Information Officer, showcasing his versatility and commitment to public safety. And whereas Chief Grau has continuously enhanced his expertise and knowledge, completing the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command Class Number 250 in 2007, thereby enriching his leadership skills and contributing to the advancement of the department. And whereas Chief Grau has been duly recognized for his outstanding contributions as a 2009 Officer of the Year by the Florence Rotary Club and the 2011 Kentucky Court of Justice Award for his innovative efforts in establishing the Teen Academy for the first-time youthful offenders diversion class. Now, therefore, I Julie M. Abashan, Mayor of the City of Florence, and on behalf of the members of Florence City Council, express our deepest gratitude and appreciation and do hereby proclaim that when it happens on May 1st, it will be Chief Tom Grau Day. Thank you, Chief, for your dedicated service and your unwavering commitment to our city. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Diane?
A lot of you think that all a police officer does is ride up and down the street and hand out tickets or respond to calls and things of that sort, and of course, we want them to do that. But that's only part of the job that a police officer does. A police officer does an awful lot of, for lack of a better term, social work, individual work. People in need, people who are hurting, people who have a need for attention and things of that sort. And so in many ways, a police officer ends up being almost a social worker from time to time, and they have to have the ability and the feel to how to work with people. And I've never noticed anyone who could work better with people than Chief Groul. That's one of his attributes. He's non-confrontational, but he gets everything done that he wants done. And so we're going to miss you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's hard to believe come May first, it's twenty-nine years ago that, and I have to give a shout out to them, it was former Mayor Evelyn Cobb, Police Chief Charlie Callen, two prominent figures in the history of this city, gave a young, skinny, twenty-two-year-old kid from the west side of Cincinnati an opportunity, a chance, and I'll be forever grateful to them for that. Just a quick story since, you know, you guys got all these people here together, so I'll tell a little quick story of how I even ended up taking that test here. It's funny how life works, right? So while I was at UC, you had an intern at police departments, and I interned at Chiviet Police Department. For all, I know Linda knows where Chiviet is, so Chiviet's on the west side of town, a small town. And so, you know, I was interning there and I was doing ride-alongs and I got paired up with a really good officer, and that officer's name was Ed Taylor. And Ed Taylor was a heck of a guy and, you know, I learned a lot from him, how to treat young people that want to get in the field, and he gave me great advice. He's like, take as many tests as you can, get out there because that's what you want to do. Well, I'm not kidding when I tell you, Ed told me, he goes, and if you ever see an advertisement, because back then we were still doing it in the paper, no, no phone, text, whatever. He said, if you ever see an advertisement for the city of Florence, he goes, my brother Pat Taylor works there as a police officer. And he said, I'm telling you, in about ten or fifteen years, that town's going to be booming. And I kind of stored that in the back of my mind and, you know, as I, just like all these officers here will tell you, you know, it's a process trying to get on places. And sure enough, there it was, the posting, and I applied and I guess the rest is history. So just a little bit of background to how I ended up here, and this is home for us and for my family, and I greatly appreciate all the sport over the years. I don't think I could do justice on thanking the amount of people that helped me along the way. Obviously, my family's in attendance, they were the huge part, they were here for twenty-nine years of a lot going on. You know, I have to at least mention some of the chiefs that started me in my leadership position. Chief Tom Kathman was the first one that promoted me to corporal. Chief Tom Zrelinski promoted me a couple of times. Chief John McDermott gave me the opportunity to be assistant chief, and then former Mayor Diane Whalen, who gave me the opportunity to become chief of police six years ago. So I'm forever grateful for that. My office staff who's here, I know they put up, they deal with me a lot, so they've been great. My command staff, those captains, they get a lot. Honestly, any officer in this room that's probably within shouting distance knows that that's how I am, and I can't tell you enough, as leaders in this city, how important it is and that your support over the years for our police department. When you look around this country and you see the ones that are having success, it's because of that support from their leaders in government. Those people that are struggling, those cities that are struggling, decided, made that choice to not support the police departments because of some things going on in society, and it's a shame. And you can see what's happening in those areas. But I'm truly grateful for being a leader in this city and for the years I had, and I just want to make sure I let the residents, the business owners, and the leaders in this city that the department's in great hands. We have an unbelievably talented young group of officers and young leaders, and with me stepping aside, that's given them the next generation of leaders for this city. And I will promise you that this department will stay one of the best in the region and they will be engaged in this community because that's what they hear from me on every day is, and then I can tell them, and I'm truly grateful for my opportunities. Thank you.
We do have to go to a closed session, but while we're in there, it should be a brief closed session. We will have a little reception and some refreshments in Chief's honor, so please stay with us and, Melissa, are you manning that?
I am.
Motion to go into closed session pursuant to KRS sixty-one point eight one oh one B acquisition sale of real property where publicity would be likely to affect the value of property acquired for public use or to be sold by the city. Mr. Nguyen?
Second.
Second, Mr. Carroll. All in favor?
Are.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and then we will go to our caucus room. We will return to this room to adjourn, and we do not anticipate any further business taking place other than cupcakes, so.